Chili.
Can't be true.
All right, it is nine o'clock and this is the time and place set for the zoning board of adjustment for the city of Pittsburgh hearings on November 4th, 2021. And the first case of the morning is zone case two eighteen of 2021 for fifty-two forty-four Carnegie Street. The applicant is identified as Patrick Connolly. Do we have Mr. Connolly with us? Hello, Mr. Connolly. Could you unmute yourself, Mr. Connolly, so that we know that you're there?
There it is, hopefully, and there's a video.
There we go. Hello, how are you?
The morning.
Um, do you anticipate that anybody else is going to testify with you this morning?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you, do you swear or affirm that the information you provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. And Daniel, could you read in the case, please?
This is case two eighteen of twenty twenty-one for five-two-four-four Carnegie Street. The application is to install a six-foot-high residential fence, and they're requesting variances from nine-twenty-five dot oh-six dot A and nine-oh-three dot oh-three dot E dot two. A five-foot exterior side setbacks required and zero foot is requested for the fence.
Okay, so we have your materials, Mr. Connolly. Can you explain where your property is and what it is that you're proposing to do?
Sure, so obviously Carnegie Street in Lawrenceville, it's a typical, you know, Lawrenceville row house, I'm in Tenth Ward, Lawrenceville, Upper Lawrenceville. It's actually a corner lot, so it's on the corner of Carnegie and McCandless, so the fence that we're talking about is actually on McCandless side, and it's proposed to the back end of the property. Just a couple, a couple things preliminarily. First of all, and I know the initial application was put in for a six-foot fence, that has since been modified. I think there's a new site plan. It's part of your package, modified slightly just to bring it down a bit. It is partially, the rear portion is five feet and it goes down to four feet towards the, towards the front of the fence.
Okay, that's good to know.
I'm sorry?
That's good to know. Okay, well, that's good, press, understand.
The other issue, and just again, full transparency, the fence has been built. And it was no, you know, through no disrespect to this process, I actually applied for the approval, you know, long before I, you know, we started the fence. It's, you know, I could get into the whole story if you want, but what, how this all transpired, I applied back in April, and there were some issues with the initial application that I, that I wasn't aware of, but in any event, we do have some pictures of the fence, so maybe in that sense it'll help make your job easier, but again, I just wanted to be clear that it was certainly not.
No, and we appreciate that, that, that does happen from time to time. We, you know, we prefer to review things before things are installed, but
Sure.
But if we can move through your materials, let's see.
Yeah, if you want to just keep going through it, we just, again, they're mainly pictures. This is, alright, here's a picture, that's the new site plan. You'll see that, again, the property is along McCandless, the houses from, basically the whole block from Carnegie Street back to Natrona Way is the alley. The front part of the property is a, is the house, obviously. The rear portion, we do have a small yard. And what happened, you know, again, long story short, we have some street trees on McCandless that unfortunately a microburst did some damage to, which in turn did some damage to the, to the fence that had been there. So we had to replace the fence and, you know, trying to figure out what to do. It was a chain link fence originally. We wanted to replace it. We have a now, now two-year-old son who likes to use the yard. We thought maybe with the backyard would like a little more privacy. You know, understanding that I needed some sort of approval to get, get a new fence. I did some little bit of research and, you know, looked at the city's website and was under the mistaken impression that a six-foot-high fence would be, you know, would, was, was acceptable. So we started the planning, and you know, that's when I started the approval process and signed up with a fence company and, and, you know, a couple months later, started the construction. And that's when I realized it wasn't as much the height issue as the setback, or I guess it was either.
Yeah, it's sort of a combination of both, and the you have a challenge because you have an exterior sites.
Right.
You're on a corner, so you have the exterior side of the lot. Well, let's, if we can move through, I think I understand where the, the fence is to be, okay.
So there's the, that's, yeah, that's obviously McCandless, the side of the house, you see, it sits along the side, and then it would wrap around if you want to keep, you know, just, just keep moving through, I think you'll get a sense of what it looks. And that's the four-foot-high portion.
I keep forgetting to ask about the photo of the posted notice, but thank you for including that.
Sure, it's there. So that's, again, it gives you a better sense. It's the, the front end of the house, if you could see, has sort of that wrought iron, black wrought iron, open, you know, gate, so this is just the rear and picture on the left kind of gives you, it was hard to get in the picture because cars parked on the street, but gives you a sense of the four-foot and how it jumps up to five-foot in the back where the, where the actual yard is. Which, you know, I think while this process was going on, I realized the six-feet wasn't gonna work, and I think it looks, worked out better with the, with the four to five feet anyway, but.
Okay, so you're moving from four to five feet as you, as you go sort of up McCandless, is that?
That's correct.
And can you explain, I'm, I'm seeing that McCandless is a brick street. What's on the opposite side of McCandless from your property?
It's a, it's actually a playground. That's, that's a, that's a brick, that's a sidewalk, that's not the street, that's the sidewalk.
Oh, okay, oh, that's, okay.
Yeah, it's actually a large sidewalk, it's, probably, I've actually measured, I think it's about a twelve-feet-wide sidewalk, and if you could kind of see the trees in the upper right-hand corner, those are the trees that fell and damaged the fence in the first place. So it's actually, it's a wide sidewalk. And again, you know, depending on how, how well you know McCandless, it's extremely, it's a busy street, it's, it's the main route for these shuttle buses that come up and down from, from the hospitals, they park below Butler, and they shuttle up and down all day up to West Penn and Children's. There's, you know, school buses, it's, there's actually an Amazon facility proposed below, on McCandless below Butler, which I think they've already announced McCandless will be the main route for all the the delivery trucks, and it's, you know, it's a fairly busy. It's just the stretch of McCandless between Butler Street and Stanton, it's, it's only a few blocks.
Let's go back, do you have any photos of, of, again, thank you for clarifying that that's a sidewalk, that does look like a wide sidewalk. But it's a, is it a school playground, a public playground? I mean, and that's immediately across the street?
It's, yeah, it's called McCandless Playground, it's just your typical, no, it's a public city playground, you know, with a couple swings and a whatever that's called, a you know, with the, you climb on and slide and so forth.
Is there, is it chain-link fencing or another kind of fencing around the playground?
Playground is chain-link fencing, yes.
Okay. And is it four feet, five feet?
Four feet, four, I guess, yeah, I think it's four feet.
Okay, let's, let's, let's keep flipping through what, what you have here, but I think that's.
Good, that's the full.
Oh, yeah, that gives you a sense of the width of the sidewalk, that's okay.
And their tree again, but yeah.
Keep moving. Thank you.
And that shows, and I know the, the issue with, I think the main thing of that was just, take a look at the fence, it's a it also, some of the, it's, it's a lot of completely privacy fence, there's about an inch, inch gap between the
Okay.
thickets. So I think that's what that, that was meant to show.
Okay.
It's a cedar fence, pretty nice fence. So what I, you know, then what I did, and again, when I was planning all this, my, my impression and understanding was that this, you know, six-foot privacy fence, we actually walked around the, the neighborhood before, trying to figure out what we wanted to do, and from what I could tell, a six-foot privacy fence was sort of the, the primary most common fence in, in, you know, Tenth Ward, Lawrenceville. This is one block, it's actually, I guess, one block between us, maybe two blocks up, you know, right up the street from us, it's a that's six-foot, obviously has the, the lattice at the top, but that's
Right.
no, no setback there. That's, again, that's on McCandless, just a block up from us, and then the next picture is that's directly across the street from that fence, again, on McCandless, again, it's the far right is, is six-foot, I think it's actually a little over six feet, and it goes down as well. But again, similar, you know, privacy fence, no setback there. Go to the next one.
And, and you're not, you're not aware of whether any of these fences were
I am not.
Approved.
Absolutely not, and I'm not commenting whether they're, exactly, whether they were, no, it's just a matter of more of the context of the neighborhood and what other, you know, what other folks have done, that, that's the only reason for these, and again, my you know, impression that this type of fence would have been, would have been acceptable, but, anyway, you go, you go to the next one. This is a little bit further up on McCandless.
Dan, yeah, come.
There.
Yeah.
A little further up on McCandless, again, just another six-foot privacy fence. So those are three, again, the, for McCandless, Butler to Stanton is only, I don't know, I guess, if we count the alleys, maybe six blocks or so, but there's, you know, there's a few at least other similar fences, and then the next, you could, you could keep going. So this fence actually, this is actually on my block. This is, I guess maybe you'd call this the mirror image house of my block, which is the, the other end of the other corner of Carnegie Street on the, across the street, so that's Fifty-third Street, Carnegie Fifty-third. And that fence is, again, it's, it's actually, as you can see, wraps around the front of the house all the way down to the alley. And again, I think the front part of that, because I've stood next to it, is higher than six feet. Some of the trees you can see kind of cover it up, but yeah, that's just a, it steps down, but it's, it's, again, that's a privacy fence, and that's on my block, like I said, that goes around the, the front end of the house. I would think that the rear of the houses would be a little more acceptable, but again, that's just a more, more examples, and if you keep going, Dan. So this fence is, is basically the exact corner of my quarter, except two blocks down, that's, that is Natrona and Stanton, or Fifty-first, Stanton Avenue. That fence, actually the same thing, I stood next to it, I'm six-two, and that was taller than me, at least at the back corner there. Obviously a lot, lot older, I don't know how long it's been there, and, but, you know, again, just show the context and that's two blocks, and then this is two blocks in the other direction, again, it's, it's, this one's overlapped, but that's on Fifty-Fifth Street. That's on Dresden.
That's a couple blocks up then, I guess.
That's fifty.
Okay. So I don't have any other questions, I think I, I understand the nature of the request, and, and thank you for providing all the context photos, because I think that's helpful as well. Ms. Burton Falk or Mr. Richardson, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No questions, Madam Chair.
No questions.
Thank you, and do we have anybody else who would like to participate in this hearing? If so, if you, if you would like to participate, please raise your hand and let us know.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, so no hands raised. Mr. Connolly, thank you for putting together that package of pictures that, that is really helpful. Like I said, the one thing that would be helpful for me would be to have a view of looking across the street at the playground, just so we know what's on the other side of, of McCandless, I think that may be the one view you might have liked to provide. But if, if you wouldn't mind submitting that, you know, I think that would just round out the record.
No problem at all, I'll do that, and email that to you, Daniel, does that, does that work?
That should do.
To you, within a day, at least when I get a chance to get.
Yeah, just wait, wait, have a moment, I think that, that would be helpful for us to look at, but thank you for your testimony, and thank you for appearing this morning.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on to the next case, which is zone case two thirty of twenty twenty-one for forty-eight seventeen Chatsworth Avenue. The applicant is identified as Georgetta Rue. Do we have Ms. Rue? Do we have the applicant in this case?
Yes, I'm Rob Dowar, I'm the architect, and Ms. Rue is here in the room with me.
Oh, good, okay, that's helpful. So I, can I ask you, do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. All right, Daniel, could you read in the case, please?
This is case two thirty of twenty twenty-one for four-eight-one-seven Chatsworth Avenue. The application is for the use of a three-story barn-type addition attached to an existing two-story single-family residence as photography studio. They're requesting a variance from nine-twenty-one dot oh-two dot A dot four. Art and music studio are not permitted in the R-one A zoning district and a special exception from nine-sixteen dot oh-four dot C. Parking and loading shall not be located within fifteen feet of a residential site.
Okay, so go ahead, can you, Mr. Dow, are you starting on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. If you could start by orienting us to, where is the property in Hazelwood, and what is it that we're proposing to do here?
It, it is on, oh geez, what's the address?
Forty-eight seventeen Chatsworth Avenue.
Yeah, Chatsworth Avenue, it's about a block off the main commercial street in Hazelwood. What we have is a formerly two lots that have been consolidated into one. You're looking at, on the pictures on the left, is sort of a two-story, double-porch residence, and then vacant lot to the left. There's an existing curb cut and a shared driveway, which we intend to continue to make use of. And our addition project is essentially to the left of that existing residence. Next slide, please.
So is it, it's a double lot, is that?
Yes, it's been years ago consolidated, so it's now the width of a double lot. Currently one parcel.
Okay.
This is just a little bit more measured detail of the existing conditions on the site. It slopes up more than one level from the front of the property sidewalk all the way to the back. And so we intend to kind of make use of that gray, existing grade, kind of keep it the way it is. In our next slide is kind of the planned site plan. The structure itself is within all of the setback lines. It's within the height requirements, will be a double-port situation, so it's going to be contextually appropriate. And the, we don't need any variance of any kind for the structure itself.
Yeah, but you need a, you need a variance for the use.
Correct.
So, I, I, I mean, that's, it, it's challenging for the board, because when you are requesting a use variance, you're, you're to demonstrate that the property can't be used in any manner that's permitted under the zoning code. So technically, you would have to demonstrate that the property couldn't be used for residents, and it's already being used for residents. So this is an additional use on the property, so the fact that the structure would fit is fine, but again, the, the use itself, is it intended as a home occupation, is it intended as a commercial operation?
Well, yeah.
That's what I think the board needs to understand.
I, I agree with every point that you just made. What we have here essentially is a home business that has been blessed to grow into more than just a home business. I can let Georgetta here speak a little bit to what they do.
So Delugee and Main Street help businesses get to the next level marketing-wise. And when, before the pandemic, we were meeting our clients in their places of, of business and doing their commercial work there. But as, after the pandemic hit, that became extremely challenging. And so we worked through it. But we never know what tomorrow's going to bring. So we won some awards for helping businesses get to the next level and enable them to continue to work during the pandemic, we got a Citizens Bank award, the, the only one it was given to in the Pittsburgh area. And what we're trying to do is to continue that, that work in helping businesses get re-established and to grow, and especially in Hazelwood, we have a large number of small businesses that are trying to get established, and this studio would greatly help us in establishing that.
Well, and I appreciate, I appreciate those challenges, but like I said, from the board's perspective, it, it, it everybody is experiencing challenges in this day and age, and the, the, the question is whether you can have a commercial use on a residential neighborhood. And I'm, you know, growing a business, like, does that transform what should be a residential neighborhood into a commercial neighborhood? Or is everything, hang on, just let me, let me see, see where my questions are going. How many employees would you have on site? How many customers would you have visiting? What are your hours of operation? I mean, if it, if it's truly more akin to a, a home occupation, we could put limitations on it. And, you know, just say that for as long as you're using it for your home occupation within certain hours of operation with a limited number of employees, a limited number of visitors, that might be okay. I mean, could the, the structure itself be made part of the residence sometime in, in the future? I mean, those, those are the kinds of things that I think we have to consider.
Yes, absolutely, and, and when we were designing it, we were designing it so that if in the future that, that we cease to exist, it could go back to being a full residence. The other thing I would like to point out is that my side of the street is residential, but the side across the street is commercial.
Okay.
One side of, of Chatsworth Avenue is commercial, and the other side is residential. So we have a former post office that is directly across the street from us that's being used as a commercial facility. We have a YMCA on Chatsworth Avenue. Some other developments that are going up that are commercial, so it, it, it would not be out of line with what the street has potentially on it and being developed on it.
Oh, okay, can, could you go back to my questions about number of employees, hours of operation, and how many customers you would envision coming to the property?
We are small, so I have currently five employees, including myself. And we generally do not have more than one client in the establishment of
At a time.
At a time, yes, no, so there's only one client in the establishment at a time. We did get a Heinz grant for We Are Open, so we might at tops have two clients in at a time.
Okay, and hours of operation?
We are open from ten to eight in the evening.
And what, you said the, you described the uses immediately across the street, but what are, are on either side of you? That's residential on your side of the street?
They're at homes, yeah.
Okay, and you have other materials, so I think we should probably take a look at those too, thank you.
So the, we're continuing the, the vacated alley, which is essentially a driveway now. There would be, our required parking spaces will be in the back with a level accessible entry to what we're calling the main floor. And then the, the basement is essentially off the sidewalk. And if you could keep flipping, we're, we're sensitive to the residential neighbor, or nature of the street. So we'll be blending in with the, the kind of character of what's already happening there with some small retaining walls, steps, planting landscapes, et cetera. Next slide, please. The parking in the back, we're just showing the, the dimensions, just to be on record. With that, there's a small amount of retaining, about a half-level. And it's a backyard-to-backyard-to-backyard-to-backyard context that we're talking about here with the, around our other adjacent properties. The next slide, I think, is our schematic elevations. So you can see our addition itself is smaller than the residence. It would be white siding, much like the house itself, a double-port situation. So it's, it's in scale with a residential neighborhood character, it doesn't read as a commercial structure, really. In any way. We don't intend to do, you know, dramatic commercial signage or anything like that, so it's, it's kind of a demure property in that regard.
Well, do you, that's actually an interesting point, what are, do you have a plan for signage? Because technically, for residents, and even for a home occupation, the signage limitations, I mean, you're really not allowed to have signage, so.
And we, nothing on the building, certainly. I think we, we, I was going to envision maybe a little standalone sign near the sidewalk, if if permissible, but we haven't even looked into that, and we're not asking for for that at this time.
Okay.
We would accept restrictions, I think, in that regard, if it was a necessary aspect of our approvals.
Okay.
And there, there might be one more slide. Oh yes, just start posting.
The posted notice.
On.
Thank you for including that.
So we can go back to the site plan or whatever, and address any additional questions.
Like I said, I'm less concerned about the site plan than I am about the use, because that's it's parking and loading, and it's a, a commercial use in a residential district. The one thing that I think, that you didn't include that I think would be helpful is providing some photographs of the context of the street. Ms. Rue testified as to the commercial uses across the street. But getting a full context of those I think would be helpful to understand the nature of the neighborhood generally, and also, if there's a zoning map that depicts the line of demarcation between a commercial district and the residential district. I think that would be helpful for us to understand as well.
I presented this to the the ROC, through the ROC, the Hazelwood Initiative, and got their approval for it. I also had a meeting with my councilman, Councilman O'Connor, and he sent a letter, I believe, to the permit office. But I can also, if you needed him to.
That was, that would be helpful for us to, to see as well, but the first thing I'm gonna do is ask the other board members if they have any questions, Mr. Richardson or Ms. Burton Falk?
No questions.
Okay.
No questions, Madam Chair.
And then, if there's anybody who's in the meeting who would like to participate, if you could raise your hand. Any, anybody from the ROC or Councilman O'Connor's office, maybe? Any hands raised, Caroline?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. So I tell you what, if you could take note of the additional information that I think would be helpful for the board and submit that, it would be helpful to, if the ROC did a letter, and if Councilman O'Connor did a letter, we'd like to see those. And like I said, I'd like to see some photographs of the context of the neighborhood, so that would be great.
Yeah, Alice would be happy to provide that, and thank you for your leadership on this meeting.
Okay, all right, we are going to close this hearing and move on to the next. Thank you for being here this morning, and, and thank you for explaining what you're proposing to do.
Thank you all.
All right. The next case of the morning is zone case two-two-eight of twenty twenty-one for five-thirty-six Oakwood Street. The applicant is identified as Abraham Aziz, or Aziz Abraham, it's never quite clear. Do we have the applicant here? Is, is the applicant with the phone number ending in seven-three-nine-eight? If so, could you please unmute yourself? Okay. With the, we either don't have an applicant, or the applicant has the phone number ending in seven-three-nine-eight. We need to hear you if you're participating here. And there we go.
Can you hear me now?
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Now we can, thank you, could you identify yourself for the record?
Sorry about that, okay.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Okay, my name is Aziz Abraham.
Good morning, Mr.
Okay. Good morning.
Um, and do you anticipate that others will um are seeking to participate in this hearing? With you?
Yes. Yes. No, I'm, 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 I'm here by myself. I'm just, I'm gonna talk to her by myself.
Okay, thank you. And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I swear.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Daniel, could you read in the case, please?
This is case 228 of 2021 for 536 Oakwood Street. The application is to install a fence accessory to a single unit dwelling. And they're requesting a variance from nine oh three oh three dot C dot two and nine twenty five dot oh six dot A dot three. A twenty-five foot exterior side setbacks required and zero foot is requested.
Okay, so we have your materials, Mr. Abraham. Could you, oh, thank you for providing a copy of the posted notice. Um, and can you explain what it is that you're proposing to do?
Yeah, we would like to remove the existing four feet fence high because that fence is already rusty and is a bed. And we're gonna uh do it, replace it with a six-foot fence.
Can you explain um what, um, it, 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 the fence that you have is currently a chain link fence?
Yes.
And um what type of fence do you want to install to replace it?
Will be same one, galvanized steel chain, chain, with the same one.
Also a chain length fence?
Yeah.
Okay. And the, the, is the existing fence six feet?
No, the existing fence uh is a four.
Okay, and can you explain um why the difference in height that you're proposing?
Why proposing? Because uh we have uh, we have a dog over there and we have a, a lot of deers coming to the, the backyard.
Oh. You think they can't clear the six-foot fence? Dear me, okay. Um, but um, can you explain a little bit about the context of your neighborhood? Um, are, what is the fence between um? It's betw- it's the exterior side, so it's on the side of your property?
Yeah, that, then, and if you, if you go take a look about um, from the right of the building, I'm sorry, the house, it's, it's a big road, it's a road. And then in the left, we have a vacant lot.
Okay, we're, we're looking at the photos that you sent in now. I see, okay. And I, do any of your neighbors have six-foot fence? So this would be the first one?
No, there, there, a couple, couple they have it, yeah. I have like five, six people, they have the six fence, six, yes.
Okay. All right. And the, the, um, the street sort of backs into a wooded area, is that, that's assuming where that's where the deer are coming from?
Yes, you're right.
Okay, there, there's some other photo, just one more photo, I think, Daniel. Could you just flip to the last? The photos are really helpful in this context, so thank you very much. I think we um, see what you're meaning, but you're not, you're not proposing any kind of privacy fence. You're, you're proposing the, the chain link fence again.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, I didn't have any other questions. Mr. Richardson or, or Mr. or Ms. Burton-Palk, any questions here?
No additional questions.
Okay. Thank you both. Um, do we have um anybody else on the call who would like to participate in this hearing?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Abraham, for um uh appearing at the hearing this morning and we will uh issue a decision as quickly as we can.
Okay, decision will be made and then you will send me email, what, how, how, how we receive that, no.
We will, we'll email you a copy of the decision when, when we issue it.
Do you know how soon it takes, ma'am?
The, the board has forty-five days to issue a decision and we try to um be more prompt than that. Um, but we're required to issue a decision within forty-five days.
Thank you for your time and you have a nice day.
All right, thank you, you too.
Thank you, bye.
All right. All right, moving on to uh Zone Case 231 of 2021 for 4923 Wallingford Street. The applicant is identified as Bob Sheldon. Do we have Mr. Sheldon? Or other representatives? Have Mr. Sheldon. Mr. Sheldon?
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, are there others who are intending to testify with you on this case this morning?
Uh, I have my associate Alex uh that's sitting here with me in my office. And otherwise, no one else virtually.
All right, very good, thank you very much. And do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So Daniel, could you read in the case, please?
This is case 231 of 2020 for 4923 Wallingford Street. Uh, the application is to construct in addition to an existing detached garage and enclose a rear porch and install an eight-foot, three-inch wood fence along a portion of the northerly property line at the rear of it, if a single unit residence. They're requesting a variance from nine oh three dot oh three dot B dot two. Five-foot interior side setback is required and four-point-five feet is requested. And a variance from nine twenty-five dot oh six dot A. Uh, maximum fence height is six-point-five feet and eight-foot, three inches is requested.
All right. Thank you, and uh we have your materials up, so if you could explain what it is that you're proposing to do here?
Sure, uh, so there's two items in question as part of a larger uh rear yard upgrade project. Um, you see, there's, on the left-hand side of the property, there's a section of existing fence to remain. That's the eight-foot-three uh tall existing fence on the neighbor's property line. Our clients would basically just like to match that fence and continue it. They like that fence, they wanna just extend more sections of that fence around their perimeter and make the, their rear yard, you know, cohesive with what they already see.
Do, um, do, are you aware of whether the eight-foot-three fence um was approved by variance or is it just there?
We are unclear. It exists, the, the property owner bought the home post that fence being erected. Um, you can see the style of it, it's about six feet uh where it's basically a solid vertical, but then goes to a very open uh nearly transparent mesh up to that eight-foot-three section.
Is it lattice or?
It's a metal, it's like a heavy gauge aluminum mesh.
Okay. Okay, and do, I'm assuming that you have photos because I think.
We do, yes.
Photos might be more helpful and the, so just so that I'm clear on the relief that's being requested. Um, there's a, a setback issue on the interior side. And is that on the same side as this, that, are both of the variances for the same side?
Uh, no, the second item is for the garage. You'll see a little three-foot addition that we're proposing to the front of the existing garage. That's just to deepen the structure, which even insets four and three-quarters of an inch in from the existing walls of that garage. Uh, but that is within that setback.
And that's the, the interior side setback going from five to four and a half feet is for the garage?
Correct.
Okay, and then the fence is on the opposite side?
The fence is, it sort of wraps that left side, continues from the existing around the back and tucks into the backside of the garage. You'll see in that sort of full back left corner.
I'd say, show, show us the pictures.
Yeah, sure, so the third slide has the context of the.
Okay.
Photos.
And where is the property?
Uh, Wallingford in uh, you mean geographically?
Yeah, like orientist a little bit.
Yeah, it's a block away from uh, uh, it's sort of a double one-way street off of um Devonshire and near center and near that intersection with Chipotle and Pep Boys and all of that at the edge of Shady Side into Oakland.
Near Fryvogels. The funeral home.
Yes, exactly.
Got it, okay.
Um, so this existing eight-foot-three fence is actually up on a curb and from our client's side is nine-foot-five tall from their yard. Um, that's then the neighbor's garage in the second photo here in the left, which then hits our client's existing fence, which is also eight-foot-six tall existing, which is screening uh uh an RMM dump, set of dumpsters and parking back there for an apartment building.
Got, okay.
Uh, so our client more or less just wants to match this neighbor's fence style and continue it or basically along the side of that garage, around the back and tuck it into their garage.
Okay. And then do the other photos show the, the garage or?
Yes, the next slide will show the proposed garage.
Okay. Got it. Okay. And, and, and so you, you said you're just deepening the garage by three feet and kind of tucking it in more?
Correct, it, it insets four and three-quarters from the existing brick line and pulling it out three feet, just so the depth of the garage can actually maintain a car.
Got it. Cars were, um, and the, what is your last slide there?
Uh, photos, so that's beyond the existing fence that they have on the back and what they see out the backyard to that existing dumpster and, and parking lot.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, okay. I didn't have any other questions. Um, Ms. Burton-Palk or, or Mr. Richardson, any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
And, and thank you for providing the photo of the posted notice. That's again, now that we're reissuing those, I keep forgetting to ask for them, but thank you for providing it. Um, is there anybody else who would like to participate in this hearing?
I do not see any hands raised.
Uh, one last question for Mr. Sheldon. I'm, I'm assuming it, since the uh applicant wanted to match the neighbor's uh fence um in terms of appearance, eh, I'm assuming that they've had conversations with the neighbors about what's been proposed.
Yes, and they have a good relationship. Uh, there's no, there's no issue there.
And well, and nobody's appearing to object, so that, that's usually when you know your neighbor is not quite as friendly as you thought, so. All right. We'll, uh, we'll close this hearing for this morning and um thank you for providing the complete set of materials, including the posted notice.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're gonna move on to, the next case is uh Zone Case 232 of 2021 at fifty-nine ninety-six Center Avenue. The applicant is identified as Emily Jones. Do we have Ms. Jones or somebody else? So, Mr. Gast, are you appearing on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, I am here, I'm the applicant, but TJ Joseph or Emily should be here that, from our sign company. I apologize if.
I see TJ Joseph, DeJoseph?
Yes.
Sorry, and let me start my video, I apologize. Just having a little technical difficulty.
All right. So I'm gonna ask each of you if you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Okay. And Daniel, could you read in the case, please?
This is case 232 of 2021 for five nine nine six Center Avenue. The application is to install two wall signs from one canopy sign. Uh, they're requesting a variance from nine nineteen dot oh three dot M dot five C. Can you see canopy signs uh maximum eight inch in height permitted and thirty inches is requested.
Okay, um, so we'll pull up your materials and if, uh, who's gonna lead the discussion as to?
I can start.
Could you just identify yourself with the court reporter so we know who's talking?
Absolutely. My name is TJ D. Joseph, I'm the owner of Advanced Sign Company here in Pittsburgh. Um, so Brian um contacted me, he is um uh a tropical smoothie uh franchisee is gonna be moving into the East Side uh shopping s- uh center. Um, and we've done several tropical smoothies, uh not only for Brian, but for other local franchisees. Um, some of the uh landlord developer restrictions on signage um made things difficult in the design process. Um, also, how the building is built um and where the natural locations are for the signs. So, we did a design for Brian um trying to mimic, not only, you know, hold his, his brand, but also uh matching the size and style of the signs in the shopping center. Um, when I started this process, I assumed that it was gonna be considered a wall sign and not a canopy sign. Um, and the, the canopy signs, um, the eight inches is a very restrictive height, particularly on our side because if you wanna do illuminated signs, when letters get that small, it makes it very difficult to build them and light them properly. Plus two, to maximum height of an eight-inch stroke, that would put the cafe at eight inches and then the le- the tropical smoothie letters proportionate to that.
Understanding that the, the, the code is what, the, the code says what it says and you are proposing a um canopy sign. And um, I, it, the agenda also indicates that you were, um, you have proposed wall signs as well. And those, those may have been consistent with um the requirements, so they're not part of our agenda. But if you have wall signs and you have a canopy sign, our obvious question is, how much signage do you need? And why do you need to go from eight inches to thirty inches? Um, which is obviously significantly more than the, the code would permit.
Well, the two other wall signs were existing signs from the previous Caldwell Banker um that was occupying this space. Um, the sign that is shown currently um is a replacement sign to what Caldwell Banker had previously, but there on two other elevations of the building, they had cabinet signs um that just required a face replacement. So when Brian and I first looked at this, I think this sign was obviously his number one priority, given it's over his entrance and the other two signs are not. Um, and I think the idea behind using the other two signs is they're there, you know, we might as well use them. Um, I don't, I don't think that if those signs didn't exist, I don't know if we'd be talking to the, about those signs, um, they're just.
I'm, I'm just curious about.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to help, you know, give you some context of how we got to this spot.
So the wall signs are on a different facade, but this is the signage that's proposed for the entrance facade. Um, you indicated that it, it's replacing the signage for the prior tenant. Can you explain how the size of the sign that you're proposing compares with the sign that was previously there?
Well, um, we didn't build that sign originally, the Caldwell sign, and, and didn't remove it. Um, I, I had a picture of it that the developer had shown me. Um, I, so I can't speak to exactly how tall the letters were, but I know that the footprint of the sign was larger uh than the sign that we're requesting today. Um, how do I tell? I, I, I can make some educated guesses on the height, but I could certainly see that the span was much greater from left to right than the sign is now, so. Um, uh, you know, I would say it was probably closer to fifty square feet where we're asking for thirty square feet here. Um, so, um, again, when we, when Brian and I looked at this, um, you know, that's the door that you see there um underneath that sign to the left is his entrance door to the uh location.
And um, so you had indicated that um this is generally comparable with other signage um in the, the same complex. Do you have the dimensions of those signs? Cause I'm, I'm looking at the T-Mobile sign next to you and it, that does not appear to me to be thirty-inch letters?
No, they're, they're um twenty-fours, but um we, we submitted some reference photos. I understand that we can't, you know, nobody, we, we're not permitted to talk about precedent, but I didn't include these photos for precedent. What I included was, I know that sometimes when we do these, um, the, the board is interested to hear about design and do they match other tenants in the space? And um, we sent in a couple of the reference materials for a tenant right across um from uh T-Mobile. Has a similar sign of similar size. Um, yeah, these are the, those are the. Yeah, these are the, those are the, this is one of the existing cabinets that was left behind from Caldwell Banker and. We were just going to try to utilize this um, on the back of the building.
And again, like I said, I'm I'm, if if you, if you have um, evidence with respect to the other signage. I think you said T-Mobile was in twenty-four inch letters, what?
In the um, like the Chestnut Hills Dental, um, those were same size as uh, T-Mobile's twenty-four inches, but. The span was almost um, sixteen feet, eighteen feet. Um, so again, you know, from a square footage standpoint. We were less than the two.
The variance being requested is from the um, eight inch height, so that's why I'm curious, I mean. Why wouldn't twenty-four inch letters work for your sign?
Well, I I think. I, you know, from from two perspectives, you know. Certainly, the 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 logo and the brand that Tropical Smoothie created is is their brand and and obviously, nobody's going to be held by that brand standard alone. In cases like this, but the way that the the logo is set up, those cafe letters. Um, sort of dictate the heights of the other letters in the signs, so. Tropical Smoothie being probably the most important information on the sign. If to hold cafe to even twenty-four inch letters would so so dramatically reduce the height of the Tropical Smoothie letters. Probably wouldn't allow them to light and and likely would make them most so small, it would. Honestly, look. Sort of ridiculous on the storefront. You know, it was, it was, it was you back into these things a lot of times by for a number of reasons and um. We tried to hold the size down as best we could.
Um, were there other uh, other information that you'd like the board to review?
Well, if I if you could pull up the site plan for a second, um, you had it up here right there, so you know that. The the sign that we're seeking the variance for is on the right side. And that that sign faces um, a fairly small parking lots, um, and I I assume this is where the majority of Brian's. Customers will be parking. Um, the other two wall signs, you can see the locations of those. Those are helpful to him just because it gets him some visibility of South Highland, but. Uh, like I said, I think this main sign, and I'm sure Brian's going to say thing a few couple of words before we get off, but. You know, that being at his entrance is a crucial sign for him.
Okay. Um. Okay, uh, Mr. Gast, did you, did you want to add anything to the uh, testimony this morning?
The the only thing that I think I have to add is that, you know, the building front Center Avenue. And we we do not have any signage uh. Available to us on Center Avenue and we only have the panel sign on Highland, which is the side street, so. The only signage that we really have to drive in customers that they're going to see is is inside that parking lot there, so that's a pretty important sign for us. Some of the other tenants do have signage ability on Center Avenue. Even though they're facing the parking lot like we are, so we're we're kind of limited as to where and what we can put there.
What are the, what are the landlord restrictions in terms of signage? Is there a size limitation or?
There, there is not in our lease, um, it's just the locations that were in the signs had to be approved by the landlord, but.
Okay.
The the locations were the only thing specified rather than the sign.
Okay. All right, um, Mr. Burton, Ms. Burton Falk or Mr. Richardson, any questions of the applicant?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
No questions.
And do we have um, anybody else on the call who would like to participate in this hearing by raising their hand?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, seeing no hands raised, uh, we will take a look at what you've submitted and I thank you for participating this morning. And we'll close the hearing for the day.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. All right. We're running true to time here today. Um, well, close. Um, the next case of the morning is Zone Case two thirty-eight of twenty twenty-one. For forty-four Pious Street and um, I'm going to recuse on this matter, so. Mr. Richardson, Ms. Burton Falk. Take it away.
Okay. Do we have an applicant?
Good morning, Sazian Hare on behalf of Bodwell Realty, Inc. Um, we also have some other members of our team here with us this morning, that would be Eric Rushkey, Paul Seda, Eric Booth. And possibly Tyson Miller, if we have those participants.
Okay. Are all of those individuals admitted to the hearing? Do you see all of your witnesses, Ms. Hare?
I see Mr. Booth and Mr. Rushkey, um, it looks like we might be missing um, Paul and Tyson. Eric, do you know if they intend to join or should we move forward?
They'll just join.
Paul, Paul's on the call and Tyson may will join, may join as necessary.
Paul is on. Good morning.
Okay, sounds like we can proceed. I need to swear everyone in, including attorneys. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do, too.
Uh, Daniel, would you please read in the case?
This is case two three-eight of twenty twenty-one for forty-four Pious Street, the applications to construct. In addition and convert an existing structure to multi-unit residential. They're requesting a variance from nine eleven dot O two, uh, the use as multi-unit residential is not permitted in Hillside Zone. An appearance from nine fourteen dot O five dot D, twenty-two bike parking spaces are required and fifteen are provided. Uh, to request a copy of the board's decision email zoningboard@pittsburghpa.gov.
Okay, uh, Ms. Hare, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the application before the board this morning relates to the properties at thirty-two and forty-four Pious Street. Located in the South Side slopes. The proposal involves the renovation of existing historic school structures for multi-unit residential use for sixty-eight units. With sufficient onsite parking to comply with the code's requirements for the use. Um, the agenda indicates that the request is for a use variance, but we also believe that approval is appropriate under section. Nine twenty-one O two A four as a change of the use of non-conforming structures. The property is in a hillside district where schools are not permitted, but the existing school structures. And use predate the zoning code and are legally non-conforming. I also want to note two quick changes to the agenda. First, um, we're no longer asking for a variance from the number of bike parking spaces because we do intend to meet that requirement. Second, um, is that we are however, asking for a variance from one of the grading standards. Specifically, section nine fifteen O two A one C two requires that cut or filled slopes. Do not exceed twenty-five percent of the grade unless the applicant proposes use of walls at intervals of not less than ten feet. And today we're asking for the approval of walls that would have separation from one and a half to three feet, which is necessitated by both the topography of the site. And the existing distance between the buildings and the property line. So with that, if we're able to move to the next slide, I will uh, let Mr. Rushkey introduce himself and our team members.
My name is Eric Rushkey. Good morning. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to introduce this important south side project. Our amazing team and the zoning board requests necessary in order to make this project a reality. I'm a partner at Bodwell Realty, a growing boutique developer, property owner and manager that is lucky enough to be based in Pittsburgh. With my business partner, Paul Seda, we are embarking on the rehabilitation and reuse. Of two beautiful buildings located on Pious Street in the South Side slopes. This is a unique adaptive reuse project, as we'll see during the presentation. We're committed to minimizing the impact on the neighborhood before, during and after construction. We're focused on building a community that positively meshes with the neighborhood. Finally, we will aggressively remove a longstanding blight that has greatly challenged the neighborhood. As I said, we have a great team, KU Resources is intimately familiar with the neighborhood and will guide engineering and environmentals. Tyson Miller is our experienced leader from KU. Seth Moon will take the lead on architectural plans with Eric Booth on point. Eric has vast experience in designing beautiful adaptive reuse projects, including Trip Hotel, Matthews Lofts, Kaufman's Grand and many others. And while we've not inked an agreement with the general contractor, we will engage one who has vast experience in adaptive reuse projects. With this, I'd like to turn it over to Eric Booth to walk us through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. Um, next slide, please. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to give a background to what we're looking at here, and so this involves uh, two existing structures and properties. Uh, one is thirty-two Pious Street, which was originally constructed and uses a convent and orphanage in a school. Um, and the interior is actually reflective of its uses. The most recent renovation was as a rehabilitation home. Uh, which made use of a limited number of existing rooms in there. The other structure is forty-four Pious Street, and this was originally constructed as a school with an auditorium. Uh, was most recently used for a small community theater, um, if anyone's heard of Veronica's Vale, this is where it happened. People mistake this building as a church, though it's actually used as a school and uh, that's particular structure has is in a pretty significant state of disrepair currently. And it's attracted a lot of vacancy and vandalism. Next slide, please. So these are historic maps and we see three different time periods here, which predate the zoning code. So on the left uh, is a map of Pious Street from eighteen seventy-two, just to orient you, north is up in in all of these images. So to uh, the left there, we have thirty-two Pious, which was originally the convent, uh, it's a smaller footprint than it is currently. And we had forty-four Pious Street, which was the Saint Michael School. Eighteen ninety, as we see in the center, uh, the convent expanded with the chapel portion and kind of created an L shape. And then the school itself expanded uh, back um, to be a little bit larger than what it was originally. And then nineteen twenty-three, there was another expansion where the convent added the orphanage portion, which kind of created the all the overall long L shape. Next slide. Uh, so this is aerial view of currently what exists, and again, north is up, and so we have Pious Street running right in the middle there between east and west. Um, on the bottom left in the yellow outline is the approximate uh, outline of our properties. And so uh, the two structures that I just mentioned are sort of to the left. And you see this kind of a a narrower portion that is in front of the Pious Street lofts, which are not part of this project. And then to the right um, is an existing surface parking lot. And that's probably all for this, and it just for orientation, the Angel Islands condo project is actually to the west of our properties on the north side of Pious Street, right down the road. Next slide. Uh, another aerial view, this time north would be to your bottom right of the uh, of the slide. And to the left, we have the surface parking lot uh, and ascended to the to the right of that is the Pious Street loft, which again are not part of our property. Um, and then in the middle, we have the forty-four Pious, which is a school building, and to the right, we have thirty-two Pious, which was the orphanage. Uh, Pious Street runs right down kind of the center, you can see there's the 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 difference between the existing um, housing fabric. There is that green strip right there, and then there's the existing driveway, and this is important because I'll be talking about elevation. Currently, there is approximately. Uh, eighteen to twenty foot uh, change in elevation between the existing driveway and Pious Street. Next slide. So this is our master site plans, I'll take a few minutes of orienting here. Um, in this case, north is actually down on the screen. And so starting from the left side, we have the surface parking lot that I mentioned, uh, to the right of that is the Pious Street lofts. Um, in the center there is forty-four Pious Street, the existing building. We're going to have a connector piece between the forty-four Pious Street and the thirty-two Pious Street buildings, and the Pious thirty-two Pious is on the right side. And sort of down below there, right in front of all the properties runs a drive aisle. Um, and which is there currently, but we're proposing to uh, also add parking on the south side of that, as you can see in the diagonal portions there. And then Pious Street is to our south. Um, I'm sorry, to the north, to the to the bottom of the sheet. There is an existing retaining wall, um, which we'll see in some images later, uh, that exists pretty much right at the sidewalk between at Pious Street. And then we're proposing a new retaining wall, which is going to be the subject of the variance that we're requesting. And again, these are all existing properties with uh, uh, located existing from the property line and the ingress and egress out of this will be. Uh, from the ingress for the vehicular access will be from the left side there, uh, there'll be a drive aisle that'll come up, it'll be one one way heading west. And then uh, vehicles will exit to the right side there on the west side. Currently, there's only one ingress and egress um, for vehicles and it is based on the left side. It isn't uh, serious disrepair, so as part of this development, we're going to be renovating that and replacing it. Another very important part about this is that we're proposing to lower the existing grade in front of the the buildings about three to four feet. Um, which allows us to do several things, which I'll talk about in some future slides. Next slide. So this is a overview of our parking, um, as mentioned, we are going to uh, uh, meet and exceed the uh, minimum vehicle parking counts uh, by zoning. And so uh, just to orient you on the left side for the surface parking, we have approximately, we have sixteen spaces. In front of the buildings, uh, which is kind of a long linear portion and that kind of light pink, uh, we have thirty spaces. To the right of thirty-two Pious, and this will be on the right side of the slide, and green there are seven spaces in a surface lot. And then we have three handicap spots, which will be located right in the center between both buildings at the new entrance. Um, and there are three spots there. That gives a total count of fifty-six parking vehicular parking spaces, which is eighty percent, eighty percent of the unit count, which exceeds a seventy percent minimum. Uh, when we take the bike reduction and we're proposing a minimum of twenty-three bicycle parking spaces that'll be currently located on the interior of the building of forty-four, so we will meet. Uh, we will end up meeting and exceeding um, the zoning requirements for parking. Next slide.
Mr. Booth, really quickly, before we jump to the next slide, did did you discuss traffic in the pre-application meeting with the planning department?
We did.
And when the planning staff reviewed this, the staff did determine that a traffic impact study was not required, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. We can move to the next slide.
So we're here for uh, two things. One is to request a special exception for multi-use uh, in a residential H District. Hillside, and then the second is a variance from grading standards, which is unmentioned at the beginning. Next slide. And so for the special exception, um, as I mentioned, the property has been used as housing, school and theater. None of these uses are permitted in the Hillside District. And to propose uses for multifamily residential apartments, which is also not approved use in Hillside District, so we're asking for a special exception. To change from one uh, non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. Next slide. Uh, this is a map of the current zoning, uh, so again, north is to the top of the sheet here. Um, the uh, boundary there in the dash is approximate outline um, of our property, and it just shows that this is in the Hillside District, as I mentioned. Next slide. Someone just run through quickly some of the existing conditions, so you have a sense of the state that these buildings are in. Um, so this is an actual photo taken from Pious Street. At the bottom of that photo to the left there, you see the existing retaining wall, which we intend to maintain, um, largely to kind of uh. Minimize the disruption to Pious Street. To the left in that picture is forty-four Pious and to the right is thirty-two Pious. To the right is an image taken on the roof of forty-four Pious, so you can see that um, there's a significant amount of um. Disrepair and also a lot of vandalism, even as far as the roof, because people have been able to get through basically all levels of this structure, unfortunately. Next slide. Uh, to the left there is the auditorium, um, which is very unfortunate, uh, even as far as five and ten years ago, this was in a much better uh, state. Uh, but this is what it looks like currently, and to the right is this uh, example of the stairs and and prior to these developers getting involved in this property. Um, all this damage had been done, um, and they even ripped out railings and so forth, and so that stair on there on the right side. Originally had railings that have since been removed. Next slide. Um, these are some shots, more shots of the interior, the left is a typical classroom, there are several existing classrooms, they all pretty much look like this. Um, where there's been uh, this significant disrepair, um, all the windows are busted out for the most part. Um, and there's just a lot of, uh, there's been a lot of vacancy inside. Next slide. And uh, to the bottom left here is the uh, the basement area when you come in. Um, again, you can see it's been used um, by other folks over the years, um, illegally, and to the right, this kind of gives you a sense of a lot of the stuff that's kind of remained in there through its use. Next slide. Okay, so the uh, the zoning request or the variance requesting is to reduce the separation between our two walls from ten to one point five to three feet. Now, where that comes from is the zoning code basically says, um, that we're supposed to do cut and fill slopes at uh, no greater than twenty-five percent grade. Um, unfortunately, the change in elevation um, between our property and the street is so significant. That we're not able to meet the twenty-five percent, so we need to use retaining walls. Uh, so what we've done is we've essentially located the new retaining wall, the minimum distance we could um, from the building. Once we take into account the desire to accommodate parking. Um, so we're adding an access aisle, vehicular spaces, and essentially where those spaces end is the retaining wall, and that retaining wall ends up being. And that retaining wall ends up being between one point five and three feet from the existing retaining wall, therefore necessitating a need for the variance. So we go to the next lot. I can just kind of show what this looks like a little more. So what we're looking at here is a site plan. North is down below. And so that sort of heavy thick line there, that's what we, Pious Street and the parking area, that is, it's, they're close. So you see on the top of that would be the new retaining wall, and just to the south of that would be the existing retaining wall, which I said is right on the sidewalk. If you see the existing buildings there, there's essentially parking. So in front of thirty-two, we have parallel parking, drive aisle, which is one way, and we have diagonal parking. Those dimensions are the absolute minimum we can do in order to actually accommodate that parking. And in fact, in front of forty-four Pious Street, because it's closer to the existing property line, we're only able to get diagonal parking. So we've made that the minimum distance, and then essentially where that parking ended, based on the dimensional requirements per city's code for parking, we've located retaining wall. And so at the bottom right here, we have two sections cut through there. And what's depicted on the left side, left and the right, are essentially there's two different conditions at different locations showing the difference. And essentially, there's currently about, as I said before, about an eighteen-foot, about eighteen or sixteen, eighteen-foot difference in elevation between the drive aisle and Pious. And then we're proposing to drop that three to four feet, which allows us to get the parking in there. It actually reduces the height of the retaining wall we have to do, improves the access, and then basically allows us to have an elevation difference between about twelve feet and about fourteen feet. And so what's depicted there is the new wall to the left side of those diagrams in the heavy black. And then the right of that is the existing wall. And then where they end up, like again, the distance that's there is a minimum that would be necessary in order to sort of accommodate those from the parking requirements for the zoning code and also those engineering practices. Next slide.
So, yep. So we've been reaching out to the community since we've been working on this project. We met with Councilman Kraus way back in June to talk through the project. He introduced us to the South Side Slopes Neighborhood Association so that we could have our initial discussions with them to try to figure out when we could go ahead and get on their calendar. We had our pre-app meeting with the city planning in June. And then we've had a number of follow-up meetings with the condo association, which is next door to the property, sixty-six Pious Street. So we met with them in early July, had a number of follow-up discussions with them. So again, we're trying to focus on making sure that we can work in a collaborative way to come up with a comprehensive plan to avoid any kind of challenges or constraints or problems with the projects, with the project. And then we did have our RCO meeting with the SSNA in September of this month of this year. A very positive response, but we were, you know, I'm sure there were a number of comments that will come out as well, so. Next slide. So this is the revised view of the project from the front. So you can see that there is the new staircase that we're going to be adding right in the middle. That align with the front entrance to the buildings. And you can see the secondary wall, which we've constructed, which is, as Eric said, approximately one and a half to three feet from the outside wall. This will be a retaining wall, which will support the parking that will allow us to do onsite parking and minimize the impact to the neighborhood. The new connector building, which will be in the middle, which will house basically the elevator and the entrance, and then allow the buildings to connect between the two, is shown in the visual as well. Next slide. So this is the view from the west side of, western end of Pious Street. So this will, this is basically the exit ramp. So it shows how the grade comes from where the parking is and will allow exit of vehicles onto Pious Street in a smooth and smooth fashion.
And Mr. Rushkey, would you say that this residential use is consistent with the surrounding areas we saw on some of the previous slides?
Yeah, the neighborhood is all residential, so it's, you know, this is more densely, densely residential, obviously, than it is with the buildings across the street. But everything else is residential in the neighborhood.
Mr. Rushkey, could you also just speak briefly to the site development challenges as far as costs?
So I think we talk about that on the next slide.
Okay, if we can move to the next slide, then. Sorry, didn't mean to get ahead of you there.
No problem, appreciate it. So we are in contract with both properties to purchase them. We have our anticipated closing to be late in twenty twenty-one. It's a significant investment. As Eric showed from the pictures, things are in significant disrepair. So there's a large investment to allow us to make this into about sixty-eight apartments, studios, one bedroom and two bedroom. Not only just to rehabilitate and reuse the buildings as they into back into their beautiful shape, but also to do the site work necessary to to do the grading and to the elevation changes necessary to make it habitable with the neighborhood. We think it's going to be at least in excess of fifteen million, so that's why we've shot for sixty-eight units. We think that that, even at sixty-eight, it's a tight, financially, it's a tight project. But we think we can make it work and make it be a project that everyone's going to be proud of. We are looking to begin the project in detail with construction beginning in the second and third quarter of next year, lasting about ten months. And we're working, you know, on both buildings so that we can take a holistic approach to addressing the site and the overall scope of the project.
Mr. Rushkey, could you also just explain briefly, would it be financially feasible to convert these buildings into single-family residential uses?
You know, the only way to convert it to single-family would basically to be demolish them and to start over again. There's really no other, no other feasible way to create single-family homes, single-family homes with these buildings on site.
Great, thank you. And we can move to the next slide.
So what I'll do is I'll just walk us through kind of the actual proposed development itself. So what we're looking at here is actually a cross-section between the both buildings. And to the left side, we have forty-four Pious, which we're proposing to have one additional level expansion to that. And to the right side is thirty-two Pious, which we're essentially keeping as is. And the only other new addition to this is going to be a centerpiece. Next slide. So these are the floor plans. The, one of the intents was to minimize the amount of new work that we're doing here, so we can retain as much of the beauty of the original buildings as possible. And so that results in a very sort of small footprint of a connector piece. And that connector piece allows us to have an elevator and a stair, which makes it significantly more efficient and actually connected to buildings as opposed to looking at providing all those things within any one of the single buildings. So at the bottom of the sheet there is the ground level. It's backed into the hillside currently, and so there would only be the possibility of having units on the front of that. And this is also essentially where we would have the handicap accessible entrance. Currently, neither building is handicap accessible. This addition and this piece between them will make them both accessible. And the plan on the top of the sheet here is a typical floor plan going up. We basically laid out the units sort of around the perimeter and working within the existing exterior walls. I'll point out that there are very, very few uses that these buildings can actually become viable, other than multifamily. No other, it'd be extremely difficult to do a use in either one of them that was not either of these things. As Eric mentioned, single-family would require demolishing both buildings. And really, there's not too many other uses that these buildings are conducive to. However, because of the existing layout of the rooms and so forth, and the existing windows and exteriors, they're actually very conducive for use as multifamily residential. Excellent. And this is the upper floor, is a larger continuation of the previous ones. The units are pretty much stacked, and it's pretty straightforward in terms of units on both sides. Again, we're trying to make as few moves as possible to the existing buildings and focus all the exterior work on renovating and restoring the existing facades. Maybe the last slide, and this is the last slide. This is the very top floor, the fifth floor, where we're adding a new level on the forty-four Pious, and this is basically shows a connection between those two. And that's it.
And Mr. Booth, I know it's not part of our packet here today, but did you post notice as required?
We did. And we have photographs, and we can also provide this.
Thank you. So I believe that covers our presentation for today.
Okay, you don't have any more witnesses or evidence, Ms. Herr?
We do not.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes, else who wishes to be heard, either as an observer or objector?
We have a few hands raised.
Okay, let's go through them one by one. When you're called upon, please state your name and your address, and I'll swear you in. Do we have our first person?
Yeah, Ms. Kraus should be unmuted if you want to.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, certainly. My name is Sally Kraus, and I reside at fifty-three Pious Street. My husband and I have owned our home since nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah, just let me interrupt you for one second. I need to swear you in. Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, sorry about that. Please continue.
That's okay. My husband and I have owned our home at fifty-three Pious Street since nineteen eighty-four. Our home is directly across the street from the current steps that lead up to the entrance to the school. In fact, my husband attended that school. Growing up in South Side, he grew up right next to the property, so he knows it very well. We have some major concerns. Number one, based on the number of units that are being proposed for this development. Our street right now is a thoroughfare. There's ninety homes there, many of which do not have garages. There's speeding that's constantly on our streets that vehicles come flying across. We're concerned about the increased traffic flow with the number of proposed units. I believe you said that was sixty-eight units. We're concerned that if, in fact, it is sixty-eight units, there's not sufficient parking right in front of the structure where you're proposing. Right now, parking is at a prime. To have a garage on our street, it's a luxury. Very few residents have garages, so we rely on on-street parking. Some residents end up having to park on other streets, because when they get home at the end of the day, there's no parking anywhere. So we have major concern for that. You're showing, I think, number of proposed units at fifty-nine. But what about visitors? When visitors come and just the building that's the Burning Bush building now, when that's being utilized, people come and they park on our street, and they walk up there. And they may go on an excursion for several days with the Burning Bush folks. So their car sits there taking up our parking. So we're concerned with that. I think you mentioned that the investment for renovation is in excess of fifteen million dollars and thus requires sixty-eight units. There was no mention of what the plans are as far as rental income for those units. I would expect that it would be commensurate with the going rates in South Side right now. And is there a possibility of reducing the number of units in those structures and just increasing the rent? If you have target income that you have to achieve. You know, we're in the process of trying to have speed humps put in on our streets. We have, we've been obtaining signatures for that, and we have major concern about the additional traffic. Also during the course of construction, the equipment vehicles that are coming in and out. You know, is our street going to be closed? It's a one-way street. So for those of us that live right along, you know, across the street from where this development's taking place, we have major concerns.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kraus. And just so everyone understands the order and process here, we're going to hear from everyone that wants to be heard, and then I'll turn it back to the applicant briefly for any responses, okay? So we're going to hear from everybody else first. Who's next?
I guess that's my cue. My name is Mitchell Nagy. I live in the sixty-six Pious Street at Pious Street Lofts. I'm the president of the Home Owners Association there.
Let me swear you in real quick. Sorry.
Yes, absolutely. No problem.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please go ahead.
So I'd like to start by speaking to my concerns for the project, which are similar to the previous residents' concerns. We're a little bit worried about the amount of parking that's being provided. There, the building contains sixty-eight units and eighty-eight bedrooms and around fifty parking spots. It's not going to even accommodate the people that live in the building. We currently access our building via Gregory Street. Gregory Street is frequently completely parked full. We have illegally parked vehicles on both sides of the street. That happens on Pious Street as well, coming to and from our residences. So our main concern with the project is echoing the sentiment of the previous resident that this scale in our neighborhood, we have ninety housing units currently on Pious Street. We're asking nearly to double that. So we're a little bit concerned about the scale, the additional issues with parking. And we have a private lot in the back of our building for our residents. So it's less a concern about myself finding a parking spot and more a concern about the neighborhood as a whole. You know, with illegally parked vehicles on the wrong side of the street, it makes it dangerous and difficult to drive. Access for emergency vehicles, things like that. And then, of course, the additional light and noise pollution that comes with, you know, a hundred or so vehicles being introduced to the neighborhood. We've been working with the developers, kind of behind the scenes, informally discussing, considering. We are trying to hash out the parking spaces around our building and how they affect our day-to-day lives. The front of our building is largely windows and our balconies, which are our private outdoor spaces for the residents. And we're a little bit concerned that with parking kind of surrounding our building for this project, we're concerned for privacy of our residents. But I do want to say that in concept, I definitely and our residents support the idea of restoring these old buildings to a useful state and removing the blight on the neighborhood and hopefully creating a safer neighborhood where we don't have to worry about vandalism and things next door. But as the project is proposed, and this is now me speaking for the residents that I'm representing as the president of the association, my residents are not in favor of the project as presented to the board here today. So I think that's all that I have to say. So thank you for, thank you for hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Nagy. Who do we have next?
Hi, I'm Denise Hartman, and I live at ninety Pious Street.
Okay, Ms. Hartman, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please go ahead.
I live two doors down from the project, and I have parking. I have, I have one of those coveted parking areas on my property on Gregory Street. And I feel that it is imperative that you close off Gregory Street access, because right now, we have the lofts who use that as an access road. And as the last person said, it's a mess. I cannot tell you how many times there have been near misses. I have seen road rage in my backyard, you know, from people who's got a, you know, playing chicken, basically, with vehicles. So I think that that has to be done. I am also concerned about the parking situation, because even though I do have a parking spot, we have two cars, so I do have to park. And if I get home- And if I get home late from work, um, I'm parking god knows where because there's really no place to park. And, uh, I just can't see how fifty-six spots are gonna make it. The other thing is, is that, as other people have said, that street is very busy. And I, I, uh, noticed that there was no traffic study that had to be done. Uh, but, uh, I think that that stop sign where the, uh, the exit for this, uh, building is, there should be a light or something there because, uh, uh, I think you're going to see a lot of accidents. Uh, because it looks like that might be a little bit of a blind spot there and that, and I think that that will be a problem. Now, all of my, uh, uh, concerns with this, I do want to say that I commend the people who are working on this project because, you know, those are very old buildings and they are the heritage of Pittsburgh. And I'm really glad that someone has come in like this to want to make these buildings work. And I sincerely hope that, uh, we can work these problems out with, uh, the existing community because, uh, it's a very nice area. Uh, but as in most city locations, we do have, uh, some traffic headaches. And I would hate to see it be exacerbated, uh, with lack of parking and trying to access a road that's far too small for the amount of traffic that, uh, will probably go on it if it isn't shut. And, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Who is next?
Those were the only hands we had raised. So if anyone else wants to speak on this project, please raise your hand now.
Okay. Um, while we're waiting, I'm gonna turn it back to the applicants, uh, for a brief response if they, if you would like to, to any of the points that were raised by, uh, any of the other commentators.
Thank you. If, if we could return to slide seven of the presentation to briefly address some of the parking concerns. I believe we're on slide six now. We could move forward one more slide. Thank you. Mr. Rush, are you able to address some of the parking concerns?
Uh, yes, thank you. So we've been very focused on trying to optimize the number of parking spaces in the, in the location. Um, and as Mitchell said earlier, we are working closely with the condo in order to maximize the number of spaces, but try to minimize the impact on, on the condominium. So we're about, trying to balance those two objectives. Uh, we've, uh, offered to do, uh, to do landscaping. We, we will do landscaping and screening in the appropriate places to, to minimize the amount of noise and light, uh, pollution that comes from, uh, that is inevitably coming from park, uh, from vehicles in the location. Um, we believe that we can add at least ten to fifteen percent more spaces, um, than are currently designated here. Uh, we think we can almost approach, uh, one-to-one with unit pair, uh, one-to-one between apartments and parking spaces with, uh, some creative use of spaces, uh, depending upon how we can, uh, coordinate with the condominium and how we can use the space on the right of the bill of the, um, uh, of the, uh, thirty-two Pious Street. So we're focused, we don't want to, you know, add more parking challenges to Pious Street clearly because we, we've heard loud and clearly from the, the community that that's important to them. Um, and we want to make sure that we can maximize the number of spaces on site so that we don't create more congestion and more problems with the, with the, with parking.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, uh, who wants to be heard, we're gonna close the record on this proceeding.
If I may.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm gonna just, Eric Booth, do you wanna address anything with regards to meeting parking code here or would you like me to?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, reiterate what Eric said, um, is that we're basically showing the conservative minimum as we continue to develop the plan and get more information on the site. We believe we can get more, um, as we're more creative about it. So this definitely represents a minimum. Um, I wanna point out that we're currently proposing eighty-two percent, um, in terms of the number of units. And, um, although seventy percent would be code minimum, uh, based on our other project, eighty percent is seen to be the threshold that developers are going for, uh, despite whether it's a requirement or not. Um, I also wanted to mention, um, I believe it was Ms. Hartman, uh, mentioned that the, the desire to close off of Gregory Street. Currently, it is our plan and we're showing it here on the diagram, uh, to have a barrier between, um, that vehicular area and also Gregory Street. So that is currently what we've been proposing. And, uh, there's also discussion about, um, the concern about the, uh, commercial, uh, construction issues. And we're sort of early on the process, but as we develop this through, we'll be developing a construction management plan that will address a lot of these things in terms of timing, spacing, phasing, and so forth to minimize the disruption on the system community.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. And, um, you know, a- as, as you all know, zoning, the zoning board doesn't have any jurisdiction over construction issues, but I do encourage the developer and the community to continue to stay in communication with each other and, and work collaboratively on those issues, uh, if and when the project goes forward, so, um. Uh, with that, I'm going to close this hearing. I believe, Mr. Booth, were you gonna submit anything, uh, after the hearing, uh, maybe posted notices or something?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll receive those, uh, into evidence, but other than that, we're gonna close the record.
If I could just add briefly too, I just wanted to reiterate that we do believe this is appropriate to consider this project as a change of the non-conforming use, however we are alternatively requesting a use variance. And so if it would be helpful for the board, we would also like the opportunity to present proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law, which we can have to the board within the next week or two.
That would be fine. We, we will accept that, um.
Thank you.
Uh, when you, when you want, let's set, let's set an internal deadline, though. What, when would you, uh, propose to have those to us?
Sure. We can have those a week from now.
Okay. Um, we'll receive your proposed facts and conclusions of law within a week. Um, we will, our forty-five day clock will start after we receive, uh, that submission, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Um, have a nice day. We're gonna move on to the next hearing.
Thank you.
And we're back. Uh, the, the next case of the morning is, uh, zone case two thirty-six of twenty-twenty-one for forty-nine oh eight, Interboro Avenue. Um, the applicant is identified as Scott Rhodamet, Rhodhamel. We have Scott. Do we have, um?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
We can now, thank you.
Okay.
Could, and I apologize, um, could you identify yourself for the record?
My name is Scott Rhodhamel and this is my wife, Ashley.
Hi, I'm Ashley Van Allen.
Okay, great. And can we, um, ask you each to swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
We do.
Okay. And Dana, could you read the case in place?
This is case two thirty-six of twenty-twenty-one for four nine oh eight Interboro Avenue. The application for the new construction of a six-foot-six-inch fence along two sides of a house, replacing an old fence and following an old fence line. They're requesting a variance from nine twenty-five dot oh-six dot eight dot two, four-foot maximum fence height is permitted in the exterior side, and six-point-five feet is requested.
Okay, so, and we have your materials up. Can you explain, oh, look, there's a photo of your posted notice. So can you explain what it is that you're proposing to do?
Yes, so this is a, a built structure, a fence on our property. So this is a zoning variance forgiveness request. Um, the zoning, the zoning permits a four-foot fence within thirty-foot setback of any road. And we're requesting an additional two foot six for a total of six foot six. Um, in this image, the top arrow is, uh, a small image of the fence from the front of the house and then the posted notice. If you would advance to the second slide. Um, this is an opportunity, I think, for me to apologize for proceeding without, uh, following the regulatory process. I'm sorry for, uh, building this fence without seeking a permit and zoning. I did a cursory, uh, Google search and that can get anyone in trouble, um.
Yes, it can.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, that was kind of misleading, but, uh, my apologies. Next slide. We're located in Lincoln Place. Um, it's up from, from Homestead and past Munhall. Um, and we're the red, uh, spot there. Next slide. This is a zoomed-in portion of our plan. Uh, the green houses are neighbors that I, uh, walked door-to-door to and had them sign a petition, uh, in, in agreement of the fence that it is not, um, in any way, uh, disturbing of their neighborhood. Um, the green, uh, outline at the top is a neighbor I just met the other day, uh, putting garbage out, twelve oh eight Diller. He gave me a verbal, uh, agreement with the fence and actually said he saw me putting it up and thought he'd like to put one up himself and he thought he would approach me on that.
Tell him, tell him to check with the board first.
Check with the board.
Check, check with the zoning requirements first.
Yep, that would be the first advice. Um, so.
So can you, can you go back to the, um, the, the spaces where, um, the, I, I'm, I, I wanna go back to where the fence is with relation to the exterior side setback 'cause that's, that's where the, the height issue comes into play. So it's, is it all the way, I, it's just on my screen, I'm having a hard time seeing how far it's extending along the exterior side?
Um, I have some, some photos of this.
Okay, oh, that's helpful. Let's move to that, okay.
Um, if you would go to slide six. Um, uh, in the upper left is the side of the house on S Way. Um, at, and you can see the arrows corresponding to the photos. Um, S and T Way, the fence is kind of chamfered to allow for visibility around the corner. And then, um, on T Way, it, um, follows basically the old fence line where there is a, a dilapidated chain-link fence, um, that, uh, was up on T Way and then kind of went up into the property along a little, hard to see if there's a little foundation wall a- along that last tail end. Um, if I could jump back to slide four, uh, page four, um, a, a little bit about the property. It's a Interboro address, but it fronts on Plappert Street, which is not to be confused with my neighbor, forty-nine oh eight Plappert. Um, but, and, and then it's surrounded by two other alleyways, S Way and, and T Way. If you would advance to page five.
Got creative with naming the ways there.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, from here, you're looking from Interboro Road. And you can see how my house fronts on Plappert. And the context of the neighborhood, there's some small, uh, you know, open fences in, in the front, fronts of houses in the neighborhood. Um, slide six, please. Uh, and seven. Um, this is just a.
Just, can you go back to six for a second? Cause I'm, I'm, you said that this fence is replacing a, a chain-link fence. And, um, that bend in the street, can you, can you explain a little bit? Cause it, one of the challenges with tall fences on exterior sides is obviously visibility for traffic. Um, can you, can you explain how the traffic works in that, on that particular side?
Um, yes, would you jump to, uh, page fourteen in the appendix? There is a, uh, slide talking about visibility, thank you. Um, if, if you see here, there's two photos are labeled one and two. Um, number one is, as you're coming to that corner, the fence is cut back, so it's not a, uh, a square, square corner, uh, allowing some greater visibility as you're rounding the corner from S Way, turning down onto T Way or turning from T Way up to S Way. Um, and then slide two is looking down there along T Way.
So S, again, creativity and street naming. On S and T Way are both, um, used primarily for garage structures. Um, it, it's not a thoroughfare by any means.
Absolutely, absolutely. An alleyway, rear access to all properties. Everyone on this road fronts to another street opposing this alleyway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, and if I could jump back to, I believe, yeah, seven, seven, page seven has the neighborhood, uh, context. Um, just showing some other similar houses that have a, a six-foot fence within thirty feet of the road along the, uh, al- along the road to allow for some, uh, privacy and security, wrapping their, either their side, rear or their side and rear of their property. Uh, page eight. Uh, this is the house, uh, this is an example of a house, uh, opposite our house, which, um, has a six-foot, uh, fence two houses down. Um, it's, um, photo number one is looking from, from the fence I constructed and you can barely see the, the corner of their, uh, fence circled, uh, on photo one. Photo number two is their fence looking back at my fence. And then photo number three is really kind of talking about that, again, that neighborhood context where, um, there are other houses with, uh, side and rear of, of their lots kind of closed in.
Yeah, that's, that's like depending on the internet, you know? Um, the, the, the other fences may not, um, be, have been installed legally, so.
Right. Um, and then to continue with a few and I'll move through them quickly, uh, page nine is a couple more on Plappert Street. Again, I, I mentioned that I, I front on Plappert Street. Um, and you can see on the map, my, in relation, my light blue house there with the other two kind of example, um, uh, properties. Uh, if you advance to page ten, it's again another example on, on Plappert. And then, uh, page eleven, uh, is, uh, a house that, and at its, um, uh, front has, uh, uh, almost maybe fifteen, twenty-foot, uh, entries, which, uh, to my understanding, they're kind of interchangeable with a fence when it comes to zoning, but I'm not a hundred percent on that. Um, but just a kind of example of the neighborhood, um, with some areas kind of, uh, closed off.
Okay.
Um, page twelve is trying to walk through the property in parcel undue hardship. Um, the item number one is the proximity to the road itself. Um, my, my house is, uh, literally five feet from, from S Way, which is, uh, pretty unique to the neighborhood. Um, not many houses are this close to the road. Uh, and even in my neighbor's instance, um, you can see forty-nine oh eight Plappert on the right of the image. They're a good five foot up from the road and they have a set of hedges along their side, which affords a lot of privacy because the grade does slope, uh, down towards my property where the road is a little raised up next to my house and, and my windows correspondingly. So, um, our kitchen window is just sitting right on the road there. Um, secondly, uh, surrounded by roads on three sides, that's, um, a bit of a unique thing. Um, not, less unique, but still unique for a property to be, uh, surrounded on three sides by roads. Uh, again, I mentioned the topography, how the S Way is raised in comparison to our property. Um, if I could just touch briefly on the broken window theory, um, there's like a little yellow hatched, uh, highlighted area next to forty-nine oh eight. I don't know if you can see that from this image. Uh, but there was, uh, a lot of, uh, trash and debris, broken glass and things and whatnot when I moved into this property. And, um, my thought is to keep the property clean at all times. You, you, um, you, uh, dissuade people from throwing more garbage in, in that location. So I've been trying to keep that clean and closing it off with the fence. I haven't had an issue with people dumping, uh, garbage along the side of my house, nor have I had an issue with people, um, parking along the side of the house, uh, there as well, uh, which was happening. Uh, next, uh, would be the, uh, the bus stop, which is circled on the plan. Um, and, and red, that's a new bus stop. It increases pedestrian traffic. There's nothing against a bus stop. I took the bus all through college. Uh, but it does, you can't say that does not increase pedestrian, pedestrian traffic through S Way and along my property. Um, and then, uh, I'm trying to incorporate that it's not changing the, uh, the nature of the neighborhood where most fronts of houses are, are open to the neighborhood where side and rear, uh, lots can have some, uh, privacy and, and closed in in nature. Um, and it's not been anticipated or hasn't been seen to impact adjacent properties or traffic. And it's, um, maybe the main point is, uh, the safety and security of, of our, of our lot, our property, uh, for my, my family to utilize the, uh, backyard with some privacy and, and safety.
Okay.
The next page is the signed, uh, uh, petition from those neighbors I, I had mentioned. And that really concludes m- my slides.
Okay. All right, there, there are a couple of more slides in the deck, just, we can, we can go through those.
Yeah.
Those, uh, the, yeah, those are the images that you showed us. All right, there, there are a couple of more slides in the deck, just we can, we can go through those. Those, those are the images that you showed us. Okay.
Yeah, tho- those are potential images, uh, if, if some sort of conversation kind of takes place here, if anybody uh, calls in. So if I could just, could I revert it to page four for our discussion and, and I'll, I'll pull up those appendix, appendix slides if need be?
Well, um, we have a couple of people who appear that um, they had their hands raised, would like to participate. I'm going to first ask Mr. Richardson if you have any questions.
No questions.
Okay, so um, we have a Steven M. and a Nancy Haynes with um, hands raised. If we could start with Steven M.
Hi, my name is Steven Moskello. I live at four nine two one Lugee Avenue. My uh, backyard is on T way, which is adjacent to the uh, the, the.
Steven, can you, can you pause for a moment? And I'm just going to ask you if you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, I'm, your honor, I'm objecting to the fence at four nine oh eight Inner Borough Avenue today because this is a danger to our neighborhood as it is not meeting zoning or coding ordinances. When driving, you cannot see the neighboring children playing in the alley, nor can you see upcoming cars coming around the corner. A car has to be halfway out on the road before you can see around the corner. I've almost hit our elderly neighbor who enjoys walking on our roads and even Scott himself while on a ladder doing something with his tree when I was turning the corner to get to my driveway on T way, which is very dangerous for any, everyone involved. In the winter, the snow will not be able to be removed properly as the fence is right up to the road, which will make an almost difficult road in the winter even more difficult to drive on. Since the fence went up their trashes on the street every week and almost died, I almost hit it before. The fence makes it very difficult for me to pull my vehicles out of my driveway with this new fence. I would not be able.
Steven, can I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, I, I know you're reading and we would be very happy to accept your full statement as part of the record. Um, but in, I, I want to get a sense of um, where, where your property is in relation to the fence. And um, I understand that the, it, it, what's made me stop you was to say you have challenges bringing your, pulling your vehicle out. So.
I'm on T way. My, yeah, he showed it. My three cars right there was on page sixteen, yes.
Okay.
I've lived here for twenty one years. There, there it is, is my driveway, which I can't pull out of because of the fence.
Okay.
Can I go on, your honor?
No, no, please. I, I, like I said, I'd prefer you not read, but um, if you want to submit your statement, we can, we can certainly take that as part of the record. Uh, but your, your, your primary concern is.
Yeah, just pulling out of my driveway. Yes, and pulling out of my driveway, which I cannot do. And if my car breaks down on T way, a tow truck cannot literally un, unhook my vehicle on my driveway. Um, you know, I've lived at my address for twenty one years and uh, you know, the neighbor is an architect and this should have been something that was addressed before totally putting up a totally new fence.
Well, let me, let me go back again. So.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you say you can't pull out of your driveway, but your cars are parked in your driveway. So is it, is it just challenging? Or what's, what's, what's creating the biggest problem?
Fence has no setback. There, there's no setback on the, on the.
But then, from, from, from your perspective, is it the height of the fence, the transparence or the, the, because it's not transparent, is it, is it a visibility issue or is it a physical blocking issue?
It's both. It's both. Visibility, I cannot see whenever I'm coming around the corner. Um, as I said, the tree right there that's showing, uh, the neighbor was working on it and I almost hit him on his ladder. Um, you cannot see around the corner at all. It's a, it's a seven and a half foot high fence. It's not six and a half feet as the, is, is being portrayed as. It's a seven and a half foot fence. And there is no setback. I seen the drawing and he has feet. There's literally the front, no setback.
We, we understand that. That's, that's what we're, we're looking for proof. I mean, that's what we're considering the variance for.
Yeah, and I've, and I've sent an email. I, I sent one yesterday and this morning um, with pictures showing how it's right up against the road.
Okay. Okay. And, and I'm going to ask you also to, um, if you, if you've submitted pictures, we'll make those part of the record. But if you could also submit your written statement, we'll make that part of the record as well.
Which was attached. I, I sent an email with my statement and.
Great, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and the next person on the list with a hand raised is Nancy Haynes. Ms. Haynes?
Hello?
We're getting feedback there. Uh, Ms. Haynes, could, do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I've just asked if you could uh, swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, your honor.
Thank you. And could you just explain where you live and what your uh, concerns are?
Um, I also live at four nine two one Lugee Avenue. Uh, my concern, my biggest concern is uh, when coming up Lugee uh, or coming up uh, T way onto it to either turn left or right onto S way. Um, you have to be halfway out in the road on S way before you can ever see a vehicle or a child or anyone um, on S way. I mean, there's no visibility whatsoever on that corner, even though that corner is cut back. Um, because of the height of the fence and because of the um, where it is uh, situated against the road, you cannot see. And it creates a danger. We've lived here for twenty one years. We have numerous children in the neighborhood who ride their bikes on there. They love to, you know, play in the alleys up there. Um, and it, it's just dangerous. Uh, our elderly neighbor whose um, garage is right next to us, who you can see in this picture right here. There's a garage there. Um, when, but even backing out of his garage, he has to be out in the road almost to be able to see if there is anything coming. Um, it's just dangerous, your honor. I mean, it, it's just, it's too high. It's not setback. When we're pulling out of our driveway to make, you can see the third car up. Where the cutback is, our car, literally, you have to maneuver because we have a garage right there, our neighbor's garage. So you have to maneuver three or four times to try and get our third car out of that driveway without hitting the fence. And in the winter time, when the snowplow comes down, now there is not going to be anywhere for that snow to go off of the road. It is either going to get pushed onto our vehicles or, you know, remain on the road. So therefore blocking our car, if there's any, our cars, if there's any um, you know, snow, it, it can't be pushed onto theirs because their, the snow, their fence is right on the road. It is right up to the road, so there is nowhere for that snow to go. So now it will be pushed into our driveway. And then we will have to dig our cars out. And we will not be able to, you know, I mean, the, it's already a hill. It's already slippery. It's dangerous. And now you're adding even more complications for us to be able to get out of our driveway, to be able to safely go down this hill. And, you know, we also run the possibility of, you know, sliding when you're coming down the hill.
I, I think, I think we understand the nature of your concerns, Ms. Haynes. That's, that's fine. No, I, like I said, I think we understand the nature of your concerns and, and thank you for participating this morning. Um, I, I just want to make sure that, that there, there's one other hand raised and I want to make sure that, that everybody has an opportunity to participate. Um, so, um, the, the last, we have one phone number here with um, ending in eleven five two. Could that person identify themselves?
Hello?
Yes. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Joanne Wall.
And Ms. Wall, do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And can you explain where you live and what your position is with respect to this fence?
Yes, I live across the Inner Borough Avenue and I just, first of all, we're talking about alleys, not roads. So I grew up in the city with lots of alleys around the houses and there's always some maneuvering that you have to do. Um, I think that there's no hill either, so I'm not quite sure what hills they're talking about. The area is flat. And I don't think that the height of the fence is going to make any difference about whether you can see or not, whether it's four feet or six feet. You're still going to have to maneuver. I just think it's a bit of nitpicking here. Um, there, there has been a fence there. So I'm not sure what, why people want to nitpick.
Okay. Uh, and thank you for, for participating as well, Ms. Wall. Um, do we, do we have any um, other, and I'm going to uh, let the applicant respond very quickly to the concerns that were raised. Um, but we don't have any other hands raised with respect to this application. Okay, um, so we, you've, you've heard the concerns. Could you, could you address them quickly?
Yes, I'd like to address those quickly and then leave a moment for my wife to make a quick comment. Um, for one, I just wanted to note again that the fence line has not changed, so any maneuvering around the fence or snow removal should not be affected. The fence line is on the same exact path as it was previously. Um, there was a mention of the elderly neighbor at forty nine fifteen Lugee. That's uh, Bob and he's actually signed my petition that it does not offend him in any way. Um, uh, T way, uh, is it an S way or a T way intersection? And by law, you should be uh, stopping uh, as you're turning onto the, uh, onto S way as it is. The fence may create a safer environment for that, that people will please drive slower through this, this back area. Uh, the, the corner, as I've mentioned, is cut back to allow for that visibility. Um, I have tried to contact this neighbor, yes, after the fact, after the stop work order came in. Um, we had previously had exchange of, of texts in a friendly manner and I continued that even with the fence, but the neighbor did not respond.
Well, we're, we're, I would just prefer that you um, address the questions that were raised.
Yes, um, the trash, um, we have a, a wide trash truck that drives through that alleyway and they don't seem to have issue with driving past the trash bags up against the fence. But, um, but we're happy, you know, to try to put the trash at the, at the front of the house if that alleviates uh, an issue for the, for the complaint. Um, as far as uh, parking, as you can see in the photo, the three cars are able to park as they've continued to park. Um, and, and that really rounds out me trying to answer each one of those issues and my wife would like to make a quick comment.
Yeah, I, I. Could you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Ashley Van Allen. Hello?
Thank you.
Yes. I, I, I guess just as a mother, I wanted to address the concern about the children in the neighborhood. I have a very young child. He's not even two, learning to walk, learning to ride his bike in the alleyways. So I, I of course am an advocate for concerns about, you know, any driving or, or anything like that, which we have not experienced. Any issues whatsoever. It's a very quiet street. Um, the only issues as far as safety goes is inside of our yard. So when garbage and debris and onlookers are, are um, passing by, that's really the only area of concern for safety for children, including mine.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, and again, we're going to take into consideration all of the exhibits and all of the testimony that have been presented here today. And um, the board does have forty five days to issue its decision and if you would like a copy of the decision. Daniel, can you give the email address again? We, we'll send one to the applicant, but I want to make sure that the objectors have an opportunity to request a copy of the uh, uh, the decision as well.
Sure, uh, the email address is zoningboard@PittsburghPA.gov.
Okay. All right, you've given us a lot to think about and we will uh, issue a decision uh, as required.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, uh, Mrs. Burton-Balk, and, and thank you, Mr. Richardson, for your time.
Thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll move on to the next, the last case of the morning. Um, which is zone case two forty one of twenty twenty one for thirty one seventy eight McClure Avenue. Um, the applicant is identified as Lisa Whitney. Ms. Whitney? Are you with us still?
I'm sorry, I am. Can you hear me?
Um, do we anticipate others testifying with you this morning?
No, I do not.
All right, and do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. So, Daniel, could you read in the case, please?
This is case two forty one of twenty twenty one for three one seven eight McClure Avenue. The application is for the change of use to two unit residential and the continuation of an existing office. They're requesting a variance from nine eleven dot O two. Use as two unit residential is not permitted in the UI zoning district.
All right, so Ms. Whitney, what we got here?
We have uh, an existing property that uh, does not meet the current code and we actually would like to add that uh, as we began working on this project, we discovered that there's a, a secondary stair in the rear. Um, it's in disrepair and we would like to replace the wood with a fire retardant treated wood. We don't want to change the footprint. We don't want to change any, anything. We don't have to. But we have some photos to show that um, it is actually right on the property line. Uh, and therefore uh, would require a variance to make this change, but we think that the wood needs replaced.
So when you say that, that the structure, the structure itself doesn't comply with the code requirements or its, its current use or prior use?
It, it, uh, so the, the district, the, the structure itself is in a district that does not allow for the, what we believe was the original use and the use that we're proposing, which would be to maintain the existing first floor as office that. Uh, I actually have the certificate of occupancy that shows the first floor is already office. Um, but we believe that this originally, historically probably had apartments above and we would like to restore those apartments. Um, the current certificate of occupancy shows those as storage. They, I, I presume they weren't being used. And just to maintain the first floor occupancy, they just, uh, you know, asked that it be storage. If we could move to the.
Just to hang on, I'm going to say, so the, the upper stories. Um, what indications do you have that they had previously been used for residential? I mean, was there an area of four bedrooms? I mean, is there an internal configuration that makes you believe that they had been residential units?
Yes, so two things. We believe that where that garage door shown on the front is, we, we believe that that was actually a storefront to enter the first floor. And the door that you can see to the left of that was a door that went uh, up a set of stairs and led to an, an apartment unit on the second floor and then one on the third. And uh, we, we actually uh, can submit our floor plans. Uh, I, I didn't think to submit them in this presentation. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. And, and what, what I'm asking is, um, is there any indication on the second or third floor? Like, here's the gas hookup for a kitchen or.
Right.
Their bathrooms. I mean, what, what indications do you have that tho- those had previously been used as individual units?
Uh, well, with some minor alterations, we are leaving the units in place. And so, yes, there were kitchens and bathrooms in the units.
Okay, and then um, the, the separation between the second and third floor, I mean, the, clearly they're separate units. There's separate access for the different units?
Yes, yes. And, and again, we do have floor plans that um, I can provide to you that show that. And uh, again, it's with minimal changes we're making. Um, and in fact, for code upgrades, you know, we just, we need to make sure we have fire separation. We need to make sure bedrooms have windows. Those are the changes we're making. Otherwise, we're trying to leave two apartment units intact as they were.
And um, this is a UI district, so can you expla- are there other residential uses or is it clearly industrial? Like, give us, give us a sense of the.
Yeah, uh, Daniel, if you could just go to the ninth. Yeah, uh, Daniel, if you could just go to the ninth um, page, we, we did actually. Um, look at the, the, the context, and uh, what we found is that our unit is, um, you know, not quite in the middle. But it's the bold one that says thirty one seventy eight McClure Avenue, and then if you look uh, just above that, it lists the one, uh, you know. Just north of that, which is a two-story building with a restaurant, and then a dwelling unit above. Uh, and this is by uh, the certificates of occupancy, uh, as best as we can collect them. Um, and then behind in, you know, in the rear, on the, the alley behind Le- Lucky, I think it is. Um, there are single-family dwellings on that street, um, and then. Uh, there are actually more than this, but these are the ones that we could find certificates of occupancy for. Um, and um, if you look further down, you can see there are some additional, you know, similar, similar conditions where we have. Three-story building, commercial on the first floor, residential above, uh, you know, so on, um, if you can actually go to the next slide after this all.
The, the district is zoned UI, but what you're saying is this configuration of first floor store, storefront. And upstairs residential is pretty common in the immediate neighborhood.
Correct, correct, yeah, that's, we believe that, that if you, if you look, this is just sort of this strange little pocket that, that ended up in the district. And so you can see, you know, our uh, building is um, it's, it's sort of in that picture that's to the left. Um, you can see just the corner of it, and these are the two neighboring buildings, and so they're very similar in nature. Um, and if you, if you would go to the next slide, um, this is the, the other side, you know. Um, looking to the right of our building, so again, it, it appears that these were, you know, first floor commercial, second floor residential. Um, and then the, the next one after this shows sort of the street context again. Um, across the street from us is this hillside, um, and so really, we're only seeing structures on our side of the street. Um, and then if we could just go back, um, five to the, to the one bef- before.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I got you out of order, I apologize.
Okay, no, no, that's totally okay, uh, maybe if we could just go back to the, the second slide, just back to kind of the beginning. Um, so this is our posting notice, uh, we did post, uh, and then if you can go to the, the next slide. So again, it's, yeah, this shows that we are in this very strange uh, little pocket of this district, that again, seems to me was probably. Um, more of a commercial, you know, street, at one point, not, not uh, industrial, but, you know. Commercial maybe, uh, people would live there, and there would be shops and things, um, and so really, what we're looking at is, we, we don't wanna.
Just to, again, apologize for, for stopping you here, do you have any um, idea when the UI zoning district designation came into place?
No, actually, I don't, and I'm, I, I tried to research it, but I'm not sure how to find that information.
Okay, I, just curious.
Yeah, I, we actually would like to know this, so I might need to do some more digging to find out who can tell us how to find this out, uh, for a series of projects.
Um, there, there are, there, there are old zoning maps available, and, and that, I. I, I'm not going to do that research, and nor should we stop on that now, so.
Okay, okay, that's fine, um, so basically, we're not, we're not looking to make any exterior footprint changes. Again, we are however, looking to, to replace the wood in that exterior stair, uh, but within the same footprint that we're working in. Um, the, the minimum lot size, there's none, the, the coverage, there's none, so, so none of those are issues, the front setback, there is none required. Um, the, the rear has none required when we are adjacent to a way, which we are. Um, however, there are interior side yard setbacks of ten feet, which we do not meet, we are actually at zero, we are right at the property line. I have some additional documentation to show that, um, the maximum height, we are under the required. Um, and then in regard to off-street parking, um, there's one per unit required, and we do actually have this. Um, which I, I've shown in our current certificate of occupancy that we'll get to. Um, if you could, I'm so sorry, go to the next slide. Um, so this shows that we are in fact, right at the property line, um, and, you know, in the front and on the sides. Um, we do believe that this is the original footprint, um, that we see this from the nineteen twenty three historic map. Um, so it was constructed prior to that date, uh, if you could go to the next slide, um. Again, I just wanted to highlight that exterior stair a little bit, that um, we, um, we do have an existing stair in place. Um, and I'm sort of showing with this blue, uh, where it exists, and, and again, it is right at. The, the property line, right at zero on that side, um, and we don't wanna make it. Uh, any closer to the property line, we don't want it to go over the line, we just wanna replace the wood.
Same, same footprint, okay.
Yep, exactly, the same footprint, um. And uh, this might actually also give you a sense that the parking is in the rear, um, and, and so there is parking, the, the owner does also own the adjacent property. Um, just in case there's a question of that, and it's just a lot right now, um, if you could go to the next slide. Um, this shows our existing certificate of occupancy, which again, it's a three-story structure, the first floor is already certified as an office. Uh, we'd like that to uh, remain the case, but the second and third floors are listed as storage of household goods. Um, and, and that's what we would like to have uh, revised, uh, we do have two parking stalls in the rear, and we want, we wanna maintain those two parking stalls. Um, and that gives us our off-street parking, uh, if you could go to the next slide, this shows our, our structure just again. Um, from the, the front and the rear, um, and then the next one shows the context once again, so this. Shows a little bit better the amount of houses that we see on that alley behind that way. Um, we didn't have certificates of occupancy for all of them, so we didn't list them, but they're clearly residences, the one directly behind, the woman came out when we were there. Talked to her a little bit about trying to make, restore this building, you know.
Is there a grade change from front to back?
Uh, it's very minor, it's, I would call it flat.
Okay, yeah, it's just, it's hard to tell from this perspective, so, just curious.
Yeah, uh, if we, I, we do, I thought we had some photos on the way, um. Let's see.
Fine, I, 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 I think we get the, the gist of it, so. Okay.
So this is, this is basically what we're, what we're looking at, um, and again, we're really just looking to restore what we think was the original intent of the building. Uh, and then repair our stair.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Whitney, um, Mr. Richardson, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
And I'm not seeing anybody except Lana in the um, list of other attendees, so. Nobody raising their hands for any comments. All right, uh, I think we'll close the record with that, thank you, Ms. Whitney, and um, we are done for the.